Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Tuesday, June 4th, City Council Work Session for the Playmaker Community of the Year. Our first item on the agenda for this work session is a promotion in the Police Department. Chief Getz Miller.
Good afternoon. We're here to recognize Adam Paulson and commemorate his promotion to the rank of Sergeant. I've said this before, our frontline supervisors determine whether we succeed or fail as an organization because they work where the rubber meets the road. So I'm careful about who gets elevated into this important position. We count on our sergeants to lead from the front. They're out on the streets supervising officers and showing up to critical calls where they're often forced to make difficult decisions in a short amount of time without the benefit of instant replay or a pause button. Their decisions could result in the loss of a life, an injury to an officer or civilian, property damage, a lawsuit, or even how our department's response to an incident is viewed by the community and in extreme cases by the world. It's vitally important that we select individuals for this position who can remain calm in stressful situations and make rational decisions. We ask our sergeants to not only be exceptional police officers, but they also have to be goodwill ambassadors for the department and the city. They have to be problem solvers, mediators, mentors, and most importantly, leaders. I don't use the term leader lightly, and while I hear others say anyone can be a leader, I respectfully disagree with that. Anyone can be a manager or a boss and force people to do what they want them to do, and they'll do it because they don't want to lose their job. But you're not a leader unless people are willing to follow you. People will follow you if they know you have their back and are looking out for their best interest because you genuinely care about them. They'll follow you if you drop what you're doing to come help them when they ask. They'll follow you if they know you have a good head on your shoulders and make decisions for the right reasons. They'll follow you if you watch, if they watch you proactively taking care of a situation without having to be asked and without seeking accolades for it afterwards. They'll follow you if they respect you because you treat people fairly but hold people accountable. They will only follow you if they trust you. Adam Paulson checks all these boxes. He's been a great officer. He'll be a great sergeant. He's been with the department for 10 years. He was in investigations up until Saturday when he went back to patrol. He's one of our canine handlers. He handles our bomb dog. He's a member of the SRT team, former member, maybe future going back to SRT. Sorry if he didn't tell you that. That may be coming down the pipe. He's a union officer. He's a field training officer, and he's also a volunteer member of our Records Management System Working Group and our recruitment team. This is a big step for him and it's well deserved. Please join me in congratulating Adam on this momentous occasion.
You have two pictures? Are you on pictures?
Sure.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Well, on behalf of the entire community and our city team, congratulations. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we have three presentations this afternoon. The first one is regarding Central Plaza Project. We have Jake in the Engineering Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We are here tonight to give a quick update on the Central Plaza Project. I'm invited Louis with Rinderac Associates. She's a vice president as well as a Marion resident to give us a quick update of what's, what has happened, what is currently happening, and what's going to happen over the next couple of months here. So with that, I'll step aside for Louis.
Hi, I'm Louis Rugio with Rinderac Associates. I am the Vice President of Operations. I'm also intimately involved in the Plaza Project. To date, we have demoed out the bathrooms over at the existing, or the depot as well as the existing floor there. We've got all of the sanitary rough-in done in there and the foundations for the new walls that are going to be inside the depot. We've also got the new water run, which is why we had a demo of the existing bathrooms. We've got the addition foundations poured as well as the pit bases for both the ice melt pit and the water feature pit. And then on the site, we've stripped the site. Everything is rough graded and they have started excavating for the ice loop layout. So as far as, yeah, as far as ongoing, still working on site electrical rough-in as well as the ice loop. So it is pretty cool to see it come together. It's a drastic change to the site. I don't know if you guys have seen it today, but, or looked on the camera, but there is about 100 foot long area excavated right now for footing pouring on Friday for the loop. And then once all the footings are poured there, that'll kick off everything ice, who is our contractor out of Pennsylvania that's actually doing the ice loop work to come in and run their transmission lines at the end of the month. So in the next, next couple of months, aside from that work, we'll also have all of the water feature rough-in ongoing. Structural steel delivery for the depot. We have to demo out that chimney before we can do anything else right now, but we expect to see that here late next week, that steel, and we'll get that up and then get the chimney out. But for right now, really, really concentrating on hitting the water feature and ice loop hard here. And that's our big push is to stay on track for that group out of Pennsylvania because they have a tight schedule and they'll be out here three different times for mobilizations to run lines, to set equipment, and then for startups, so.
Okay, thank you. And just one real quick for our members of the audience or who may be joining us on Zoom. You can stay informed at the link here at the, for construction updates that we send out bi-weekly by email. There's also a live feed from the Oxbow Camera that's on top of the Medco Building that takes a picture about every eight minutes or so. So you can check that out on that website link as well. And yeah, like I said, the construction updates as well. And you can also from there find the links to support the Capitol Campaign project as well for this. So. Any questions?
Do we have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, Jake, I don't know if this is for you or our guest. How are we tracking the delivery, the availability and delivery of critical equipment? And how are we assessing whether or not any delays on those procurements are going to be factored into the overall project schedule?
So yeah, so we do have a procurement schedule that we're tracking closely with all long lead items, the longest lead being the ice loop chillers. We know that the latest that those can get on site is the first week of November in order for them to be installed by the end of the year and have everything up and running with refrigerant in the system. And so based on that, we know that they have to ship first week of September and we backed into that date. That's really our big push right now is get all that through B32, who's the consultant for the refrigeration.
What's the frequency of update about the availability of that equipment on site?
Right now, it's about weekly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, so I'm not going to ask the question a lot of people would like to ask, and that is when can they use the ice trail? But we'll wait for an update later this year for that one. Can you go back one slide in this? Okay, so just next to the ice trail where you got the grassy area, right now that's about a two to three foot drop. And I don't remember ever seeing a wall in the plan, but what's going to happen in that area with that, with that drops?
So that will be cut back a little bit more. And then, and actually what you're looking at there, and it's a little bit confusing. That's actually just an eight foot wide area. That's our trench layout for the, for the loop. And then the loop is much wider on the.
No, I know, but where the grass area is where it drops down to the dirt, I mean, that's a two to three foot drop.
Yeah.
Is that going to be a wall or what's going to be there?
So that gets, that all gets graded back out. That's all pavement that goes back in for the sidewalk and it'll, it'll all be, that area gets cut back a little bit more and then that'll be graded out.
So everything, so there will not, there will not be any drop, drop offs or walls or anything?
Not in that particular area. The only retaining walls you'll have are around the loop itself.
Okay.
And so the, at the, at the straight run there where you have the drop off currently, that's, that's the zero entry onto the ice loop.
That's the zero entry right there. Okay, that's, yep, that I've been looking at that and driving by it and I go, well, I don't remember retaining wall or anything in the middle of the park.
There's quite the substructure that goes underneath the.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, good to know. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Our next presentation is Marion Arts Council. Carleen with the Parks Department. With a couple of guests.
Yeah, we have a couple of guests. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The Marion Arts Council falls under the Parks and Recreation Department with expenditure budget of a little over $10,000. Today, I am honored to introduce you Mark, our newly elected Chair for the Arts Council, and Ingrid, who is Secretary. And they will give you a brief update of what the Arts Council has been up to.
Welcome.
So as she said, I'm Mark Weiser, and I have with me Ingrid Brenas, my secretary and very important right hand. Many of you know that the goal of the Marion Arts Council is to promote the importance of art and develop programs that maximize public awareness of art, artists, and the artistic culture. This is accomplished through a variety of activities. We have six visual art gallery exhibits per year at the Low Center Gallery. The exhibits are on display for eight weeks and we include an artist reception and gallery talk. This allows people to meet the artist, maybe find out their motivation, what got them started. When the schedules allow, we also bring in local schools for artwork exhibits. We also do a minimum of two performing art exhibits during the year, and we promote art workshops designed for children, families, and/or adults. We consult on art for the City of Marion at the request of the Mayor, City Council, and on the Cultural and Entertainment District. Now, the six visual art gallery exhibits per year at the center, we bring in local artists for eight weeks at a time. And as I said, they have a little reception where they can display their art. You see here before you just two of the artists, Barbara Weeks, fantastic watercolorist, and Patricia and her husband Nasser. Also on display there on the pictures are some of the other artists. So it's not always paintings, maybe glass, maybe wood, maybe clay. And this is art from local and regional artists. Also, we send out letters to the schools asking them if they'd like to participate and show their students artwork. And nothing excites and motivates a child like showing their art to their friends, their parents, and the public. And that is, we feel a very important thing to motivate children in the arts. And you see the sample of the letter that we send out to the schools, and we have had good reception in the past. We also have a minimum of two performing art events during the year. Picnic on the Prairie, June and August, and we have had 700 to 800 people attend these events. What you see here is a poster for this year, Marion Arts Council, Picnic on the Prairie, Funk Stop, June 15th, and Bearcat Pickers, August 17th. Both of these groups are returned by popular demand. They are the ones that brought in this 700 to 800 people. And this is offered as a free concert, thanks to you folks, and grants that we have received. We also do six coffeehouse nights from late fall to early spring. And again, this is excellent local talent that comes in. Since it's held inside, we may get from 60 to 110, sometimes depending on what famous basketball player is playing at the time. But it is a very well-received and all types of music is performed from ethnic to jazz to blues and all types of music. And again, very well performed. And many of the performers are asked back again following years because they are so well-liked by the attendees. We also partner with the Red Cedar Chamber Music Group. I attended myself for the first time this last year, and I was blown away by this couple. They have talent to compare with any New York or Atlanta group, and they are local. And again, they perform on a grant, separate grant, not paid by the city on it, and they again are a fantastic group, very well-attended. We also consult on art for the City of Marion at the request of the Mayor and City Council and the Cultural and Entertainment District. One of the Art Council members is currently on the committee to add to sculpture to the Marion Square. So we're very proud of her to be that place. And of course, we do our work for the Sculpture Trail at Low Park. This is some very unique art that really adds to the area. We are a very hands-on committee, and our Art Council members plus our associate members gladly put in many volunteer hours to support to the various programs and projects that we do. Last year's fiscal hour exceeded 400 hours of volunteer work. The Marion Arts Council would like to thank the City of Marion. We received an annual budget that is used to fund our various projects and programs. This allows us to provide these cultural events which are free and open to the public, which sets Marion apart from so many other cities. In addition, we apply every spring for the Marion Hotel Motel Grant, which is used to help fund our Picnic on the Prairie concerts. We also receive funding from the city through general obligation bonds for additions to the Sculpture Trail at Lau. Or is it Low? I get corrected no matter how I say it. It seems like. A special thank you to Carleen Hummel, Recreation Superintendent, Tracy Teal, Administrative, and Seth Stressalm, Parks and Recreation Director. We also want to wish a thank you to the warm reception of people of Marion County for all their support. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead, Gage, and then Steve.
I don't know if you said this at the very beginning, but how many people do you have on the Arts Council currently? And does that, you guys have a full council?
Yes.
So right now, we're in a kind of a transition. Some people have aged out and other ones are coming in. So associate members, we have four, five, six, and we have four or five on regular members. And I have two applications to go through to add them to our council. I have been informed since I'm relatively new that we try to keep it a balance of male, female, but we don't keep it limited to artists either.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, it is a committee of seven.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, first I'd like to say I think the art exhibits and the art pieces and sculptures throughout the city is extremely important to add an element, to add that element throughout the city because it says a lot about our city and what we think is important. But I've had a few people ask me, is there ever going to be any consideration or is there any consideration to add any art element to the middle of the roundabouts that are at like Seventh Street and 26 up there? So the two, the two big roundabouts on Seventh Avenue, has that ever been part of any discussion? I have several people ask me that.
To my knowledge, that would not fall under the venue of the Marion Arts Council.
Okay.
And I can answer, I know there, we've, we've had some considerations for that. It hasn't risen up on the priority list, but it is something that we'll continue to look at and we'll, we'll bring our council along as far as the helping, putting those steering committees together when we get to those points, so.
Yeah, some definitely something that's been on the radar since those roundabouts were installed. It's just, there's a lot of competing priorities.
Gotcha.
And you know, that it's just hasn't risen to that level yet, but it will.
I, that's my answer.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, I just, first of all, I want to commend Mark because he is very recently appointed to the Arts Council. And you've become very well-versed in everything and then such a short period of time. And thank you for assuming the responsibility of Chair. We talk a lot about providing access, being a place of access to lots of opportunities for people. And certainly the Arts Council is at the forefront of that in terms of providing these opportunities to add a little flavor to our lives here. And it does say a lot about who we are. If we show that we care about the arts and giving people exposure to all types of art. So thank you for all you do, and please convey that to the rest of your committee. And I look forward to your recommendations of the additional members so that I can make the recommendation to the council to appoint them, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is a presentation on the Corridor MPO.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Liz Burke with us. She is the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization Manager. She is going to just share with you tonight what the purpose of our MPO is and the work that we do jointly together as metro and region communities, so.
Welcome, Liz.
Thanks, Kim. Good evening. Like I mentioned, my name's Liz Burke and I represent the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization. The MPO is required by state and federal law to be a transportation policymaking board in every urban area throughout the United States with more than 50,000 people. We call our city council type structure our Policy Board. And we have representation from the City of Cedar Rapids, Ely, Fairfax, Hiawatha, Lynn County, and then City of Marion, Palo and Robbins on our board. And we also have an executive committee, which is one member from each of those communities that makes recommendations to the larger policy board. Councilman Harper, Councilman Sternad, and Kim Downs serve on our policy board. And the function of the board is basically to program federal transportation projects. We get money from the federal government, which is funneled through the Iowa DOT. And so we are required to do short and long-term planning to coordinate those projects and then also program that funding towards those projects. So this photo here is just a map of our member communities. And then our planning boundary is a subsection of Lynn County. So that's the area that we serve. Again, like I mentioned, short and long-range transportation planning. Our guiding document is called a Long Range Transportation Plan. That currently is in effect until 2045. We're in the process of updating it right now for the year 2025, excuse me, 2050. It's due in 2025 for the year 2050. And then we also have our, kind of our capital improvements program. That's our infrastructure budget that goes to those regional transportation projects, and we update that every other year. We also have several other required plans from the feds and the Iowa DOT. Like I mentioned, those federal transportation projects, right now we fund road projects, trail projects, and bus projects for Cedar Rapids Transit and Lynn County lifts. That money is matched with a local match from those eight communities. They pay membership dues for our staff and our administrative budget. And then when it comes to the projects, the feds pay 80%, up to 80% for the projects, and the local communities that receive those federal transportation dollars match that at 20%. We also provide some other services, mapping, project support, grant writing, letters of support for grants, travel demand modeling, which is basically projecting future road traffic in the area. Traffic and trail counts, all sorts of things. A little bit about how our project funding works, so there's all sorts of transportation projects planned in the metro area. We come up with a list of regional projects, anything that's desired by any of the metro communities, and we put that into our long-range plan. Then we score the projects, prioritize them with our policy board, and we come up with a list of projects that we can afford based on the funding we expect from the federal government over the next 25 years. And we call that our fiscally constrained project list. Excuse me. From that list, then we have our annual, our biannual tip process, Transportation Improvement Program. Like I mentioned, that's kind of like a capital improvements program budget. And those projects then apply to receive the federal funding. As far as Marion goes, Marion has received $35 million in federal infrastructure funding from the Corridor MPO. Since 1995, Marion makes up about 20% of the population in the MPO and has received 21% of all of our federal transportation improvement program funds. Some of the products that we have funded that are either in the works or recently completed, C Mar for $6 million, portions of Tower Terrace being paved and graded right now for $8 million. The Indian Creek Trail for $2 million, Seventh Avenue project in Marion, or from 12 to 22nd for $5 million, and then the Lou Cor pedestrian bridge, $700,000, and a bus stop project for $300,000. We're also working on several plans and projects related to regional transportation planning. We've been working with all the communities in the metro on the Tower Terrace project to secure federal funds for that project. And the Corridor MPO was awarded $5 million in community project funding from Ashley Hinson's team, federal earmarks, and we're working to finish the design of all the remaining unfunded portions of Tower Terrace. We also helped fund the Indian Creek Master Plan, see for us the school planning. And we're about to start on a trail, wayfinding plan that will also include Marion. Any questions?
Thank you. I'm sure there are some questions. We'll start with Randy.
I, excuse me, I just wanted to say, Liz, thank you. I've sat on this organization for quite some time. It's a great organization. It's been vital to our community, helping funnel and channel some of these proceeds. And I just wanted to say thanks, Liz, to you. Great presentation and thanks to the team. Although the Chair of this organization, oh, he's not listening, has, has been awarded a recent position with us. So anyway, just a great organization and I'm glad to be part of it. So thanks, Liz.
Yeah, appreciate you, Randy.
Just for those who are catching up, because it's kind of a complicated process, or you hear about it, but you don't really know what you all do unless you're working with you. So how are, how is the CMPO funded?
So 80% of all our funds come from the federal government. 80% of our admin funds come from the feds and are matched with local dues from all eight member communities. I believe Marion pays like 30 some thousand dollars, 40, don't quote me on that. So that matches our staff time, our supplies, that sort of stuff. Um the eighty percent coming from the feds and then the federal transportation funding, that is matched. The eighty percent federal funds are matched twenty percent by whatever community um is receiving those funds. Um sometimes they're joint projects, um like the Tower Terrace Project in uh Cedar Rapids and Marion. Um so Marion's paying an agreed percentage of of that funds and then Cedar Rapids, the rest of it to add up to twenty percent match from the eighty percent of federal funds.
And you may have said this, you have a lot on your plate. Um how many staff do you have? And as you know, I work with the Safe House of School piece of this, so I I know you have a lot going on. So I was just, how many staff do you have that have to manage all these?
Yeah, we have three um staff planners, myself, and I manage two other planners.
It's a lot. That's a lot for you three. That's, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to open up this can of worms, but my curiosity about Tower Terrace always gets the best of me, as Kim knows. So I know we've kind of been pursuing the Raze Grant for, well, coming up on what half a decade now. So I'm wondering with other like federal funding options, since I have all the MPO people around me, um are the other option? Are the other options, are there similar like large grants that we're able to pursue or is the other strategy to find like smaller grants to make up for that total cost?
Yes.
I told you, I didn't want to open up the can of worms, but I had to.
No, so currently, most recently, um we applied for Raze uh federal funding that is uh previously known as Tiger and Build. Um and that would, that would cover most of of the project costs, uh but not all of them and I think we're looking at about sixty million dollars in remaining uh project costs and we applied for was the most recent one, twenty-five million? For Raze. And then right before that, we, so we don't know the outcome of that grant yet. Um we applied for a rural surface transportation grant. Um and we, I believe we applied for thirty-two million of the sixty million in remaining costs. Um we recently found out that that we were chosen uh toward those funds. But that's um another federal source of funding. There's a lot of limitations with federal projects on what they'll cover and how much match is required. Typically, twenty percent match um is uh standard um requirement. Um there are other smaller grants from the state. Uh there may be new opportunities uh that come out from the feds, but a lot of that has to do with what administration is currently in office. Um I wouldn't expect any new um major grant programs to be announced. Um and then short term, um the current transportation legislation um is called IJA, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and that created several new programs. Um one of which is the Rural Surface Transportation Grant that we that we recently applied for and and didn't receive. We plan to apply for that again. But for the most part, it's piecemeal. None of it's going to take care of all of it.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks.
Liz, uh first off, I I want to thank you and uh your team for uh being kind of the periodic counselor for me. In fact, uh I should just let my colleagues know, we spent probably about twenty minutes on the phone on a couple of issues today. And Liz is always very patient uh with me and I would hope her patience sort of casts onto staff here relative to my inquiries. Seriously, though, um you know, the the thing that I see your team doing is taking care of all of the federal documentation requirements in order to make sure that the spigot of funds remains open. And that also includes whatever uh requirements that the Iowa DOT um overlays on that. So um I I'm not sure, maybe Mike knows this number right off the top of uh his head, but of the total portfolio of projects that are being managed through the MPO, both active and planned for the future, I think there's probably upwards of seventy projects. Is that the right magnitude that is on our total list? Maybe not quite that many.
Maybe in the long range transportation plan, but not in the fiscally.
Right. Okay, so there's fiscally constrained. And then there is the long range transportation plan and some of those projects move into the fiscally constrained uh grouping. Um so that's the other hidden value to this is that uh through the MPO, there is a large portfolio of projects that's being managed. And that all has to be done according to the satisfaction of Iowa DOT and the federal DOT. Um one group I didn't hear you mention, though, is the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, which I would have to say um is probably the brains of the group because they really uh diagnose what is, you know, are the projects scoped right? Are they achievable? Are the dollars that are uh estimated or guesstimated uh in line with the project performance? So the technical advisory um team or committee really informs the executive committee and then subsequently the policy board uh relative to the efficacy and achievability of of any given project. So that group is absolutely vital to this as well. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. And again, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Uh so maybe it's helpful to explain like in terms of s- street projects or road projects. What what qualifies for for the MPO funding? It's not all streets, right? So I think for the benefit of all of us.
Yes. So um the federal government classifies uh through the help of the state DOTs um all the roadways in the US, um and it's called the Federal Functional Classification System. Um more or less, anything that's a above a a local road is eligible for regional funding. Um so local streets generally twenty-five miles an hour, um unless they're, you know, through a downtown or it's not the best rule of thumb, but collectors and above can can be are eligible for our funds. All all trail projects are currently eligible for our funds. Um and what was your other question?
That was it.
Okay. So yeah, not everything um is, but but the major roads.
What's the current percentage that's designated for trails?
Thirty-five percent of all of our funding goes towards trail projects.
Yeah.
Uh we receive several types of federal funding. Um thirty-five percent of the total annual funds we get go to trail, seventeen percent go to transit. Like I mentioned, Cedar Rapids Transit and Lynn County Lifts and then uh the remaining goes to road projects, which may often include trail and transit.
I mean, there was a five-year period when it was eighty percent towards trails.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that really helped. Um the policy board making that decision really helped.
We got a lot done with that in terms of trails.
Yeah.
Um and one more question, what's the status of uh our uh bus stop project? I thought, I mean, that's been around for a while and I thought that was funded a while ago, but oh.
Yep. So the that project, um we're currently working with Iowa DOT to get is it Sixth?
Sixth Avenue.
Sixth Avenue. Um it a a small portion of Sixth Avenue is not on that federal functional classification system that I mentioned. Um and some of the bus stops uh that uh Marion would like to put in um are along that. So we want to include that in the in the federal functional classification. Um so we're going to get that approved by Iowa DOT. And then I don't know, Mike might have a better idea of timeline on when those um might be installed.
We're waiting for that classification to happen before we can.
Yep.
Yeah, otherwise they're not eligible.
Oh, okay.
There are several stops in the project, um but a couple of them are on that Sixth Avenue, so we want to get the those included.
How many total bus stops? It was like in in the thirties at one point.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I know some of them are on on local streets that are not on the federal classification system, so they would be a hundred percent on Marion. So that's something we got to work through.
We were working with Kesha on the project.
All right. Yeah, I know that that that's important to a lot of people who use the
Yeah.
bus system, having the proper bus stop and the shelter, so. Um, okay, well, thank you uh for coming in and thank you for your patience with Grant. We're sorry.
We appreciate our chairs.
Uh no, I do want to thank uh the the representatives uh of Marion on uh on the MPO uh committees. Um for a while, I tried to do that on my own uh for the first several years of my of my uh mayoral uh duties and uh it's just getting to be a lot for me. And so I really appreciate having qualified people who have the time and the energy and the interest to to um represent Marion and and do such a good job at it. And we appreciate everything that you do to make sure that the MPO is functioning in the way that it should be and that all cities get a fair share and uh uh we really are grateful for for all your efforts. So thank you. Thank you, team, on our behalf.
Thank you. We appreciate your support of MPO.
All right, next we have a presentation from Dave on sidewalk gaps.
Okay, I handed out a few documents prior to the meeting. Uh these are documents that are in the slide. Uh the aerial doesn't make a lot of sense. There there is some red lines in there that do represent sidewalk, uh missing sidewalks. I'll be happy to send that PDF over to you so you can actually zoom in and see it a little bit better. Um it's a lot of data on a on a whole map. Uh so I'm going to discuss sidewalk gaps, as you'd said. Uh I'm going to do a quick little overview of the uh Safe House of School uh that Liz had just mentioned, uh and then talk about the, like about sidewalk gaps. You know, why they why they exist in the community and how they how they kind of got there and where we are today. Uh so Safe House of School, uh both districts have adopted uh plans. Uh Lindmar's just recently got completed. Um Safe House of School, they, that's what they identify sidewalks and trails um uh to the school. So so these kids can walk safe through this uh walk safe to the schools, uh reduce transportation costs and reduce just the overall congestion uh that we see around the schools, especially the elementaries uh during the school year. It's really nice and quiet out there now um for a few months, uh but it'll pick right back up in August. Um we have recently applied for, but we did not receive a uh Safe House of School uh grant, just over around four hundred thousand, which is about eighty percent of the project cost. Uh we did not get that. Uh we have been meeting with DOT folks uh trying to understand why our application, what we need to do next time, strengthen that application to get that funding. Uh that was gonna um provide some additional sidewalks, uh connections along Longfellow uh Elementary. So we're working through that with these districts and plans. Um so a lot of work to do as we continue to work through the uh Safe House of School districts for both schools and identify what we can do as projects going forward. Uh so even prior to Marion and Lindmar having Safe Houses of School programs, we were always out there trying to identify gaps. Uh we you see the cow path or the goat path in the in the in the grass. Obviously, people are walking there. So we were able to try to go out there and try to identify those gaps near the schools, parks, grocery stores or critical, you know, services that people need and try to work with those folks to get those uh those gaps installed over the last really the last twenty, twenty-five years uh that I've been working on it. So talking about sidewalk gaps, a little more detail, um this map was handed out. You can see a little bit better here, maybe just one little section of the community. Um they exist everywhere in Marion. Um most of these gaps that we see along that really impacted Marion Independent School District and some of the more internal Lindmar School District boundaries is that they just weren't required at the time of uh the homes being developed. Uh sidewalks are really required. Historically, they were always required and they were installed, but there was a period between the thirties and seventies that uh well, the automobile became king and we don't need sidewalks. We're going to drive everywhere. So sidewalks kind of got of uh kind of got eliminated uh throughout the thirties and seventies and that really reflects this map here. A lot of this development occurred in the thirties and seventies. Um so they're throughout the community. Um and they're really hard to capture, to get done because there's no building permit being associated with them. Um there's no memorandum of agreement that requires the sidewalks because of the age. Uh historically, we have addressed these gaps with the Sidewalk Assessment Program. Uh that's the program we no longer have. Uh we uh we stopped that program six or seven years ago, maybe. Uh I could find out for sure. Uh but we we uh we received around thirty-some thousand, forty thousand for quite a few years. And the last several years of the program, uh the council uh funded almost a hundred thousand. Uh so we were able to really get a lot of sidewalk gaps done. Uh the Sidewalk Assessment Program, again, we have a committee, both school districts, uh resource officers who have been part of it, members of the school, you know, council member, I think P and Z member, and just a few residents were part of that. So we take a list of uh sidewalk gaps that residents had called in or a council member had mentioned or that we as staff just saw and said, hey, there's a cattle path here. We should probably probably do something with that. Um that program required the homeowner to install, well, the city would install the work, but the homeowner had to pay half the cost of that sidewalk. We would cover retaining walls, extra grading. We had to reconstruct the driveway. Um we would cover those costs, so they were only really responsible for a two-foot sidewalk, uh the standard depth. Uh that was paid for either they could pay up just directly up front, or a few few folks did. Uh most of them, it went on to the taxes for a period of time and they just paid it off over the five to ten years where that program called for. Um so we didn't recapture those dollars immediately, most times. Um it is a financial hardship on a lot of folks. Um where we're going to put those sidewalks in. Um this is definitely the uh the attainable part of town for housing, uh but there wasn't a lot of extra money for a lot of those folks, so that's why they had to get put on taxes. And again, this this uh program ended several years ago because we had completed a lot of major connections. And there's just a desire to shift funding to other programs. So it's no longer, we no longer have it. Uh it was run on, went through our engineering department and then uh planning kind of assisted as much as we could um with that program. We're also running into a lot of gaps now um in our in our Lynn County subdivisions that we've recently annexed uh in. These are low traffic areas when they're installed. Lynn County didn't require the sidewalks because they were at one time out in the country. Um but they're no longer, they're surrounded by Marion residential development. Uh they're near our schools and it obviously creates quite the uh quite the hardship to get folks, uh especially to the schools and these areas uh just because they were either never installed, now we're doing rural cross-sections, uh makes it a little tougher to uh put the sidewalks in. You have to kind of put on the high side of the ditch or you extend the right away. Uh a little more cost associated with that. Um there's really no way to, you could do an assessment program, uh but there's really no other way to recapture that 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 investment um without it, without it being a city project, uh say you're reconstructing the road. Um and those roads are more expensive because again, they're a rural cross-section you're looking at. City utilities, whatnot. So it's just a, something that has not been done as often, uh just because it's a bigger project. Uh the gap I think most people see um is the uh the sidewalk gaps with the new development. I'm going to call this post nineteen ninety-eight uh for the most part. Uh we have memorandum of agreements really from the sixties, seventies that started requiring sidewalks, but it wasn't always done every time for whatever reason. Uh so nineteen ninety-eight going forward, the sidewalks uh were all required as part of of new development. Um all those little uh dots represent a gap. I've been trying to give this presentation for about three months now. Uh a lot of those dots have a building permit associated with them now, so they will be getting the sidewalks. So a few of them have gone away. Um uh so I've color coded them a little bit there and a little hard to see. This was on the handouts. Uh the brown are kind of our newer developments, either coming up on five years, about a sidewalk or they were older than five years, but they got replatted, so they kind of start over. Um the blue is your six to ten year gaps. Your yellow is your eleven to twenty-nine year gaps. Um you can see they're kind of just s- s- uh scattered throughout the community there. Uh these are, a lot of these are detention basins that we didn't require sidewalks on uh that are now our responsibilities, the city. A lot of those lots have been bought by the adjacent property owner for a bigger piece of property. Um and a lot of them are just um, I don't call them undesirable lots, but they have some lots that are not uh not choice lots that people want to buy on, so they're still sitting in the original developer's hands or builder's uh bottom, but with no immediate plans to uh to do a building permit that would trigger the sidewalk requirement. Uh you can see there's about a hundred and some odd lots sitting out there that are a little older than five years. You can see there's about a hundred and some odd lots sitting out there that are a little older than five years for the sidewalk. This does include about one point two five miles of golf course frontage. They're required to put that in per our agreements. We just haven't pushed it yet. And if you can see, that's one point two five miles, just that one little area. The previous map, you can see the tens and twenties and thirties miles with our sidewalk that could be installed in the community still. So like I said, sidewalks are not required to be installed in this area until they pull a building permit or they become older than five years. Older than five years, we can ask that they put the sidewalk in. If they say, I don't want to, City Council can pass a resolution, resolution of necessity requiring the installation. We've done this a few times over the years, but for the most part, we have pretty good compliance with property owners getting it installed. I know we've brought a few to the council. We typically ask them, they they will typically install. The installation of those sidewalks is a hundred percent that property owner's responsibility. One of the biggest problems, though, is we're, we see some sidewalks out there that are eleven to twenty-five years old, those gaps. We might be on our third or fourth owner. They might not be aware that they have that responsibility ultimately. That's a developer signed agreement that does pass on to every property owner throughout the life of the agreement. And those agreements do not expire. So there'll be a lot of folks that are, might be surprised when we knock on the door and say, hey, you got to put your sidewalk in. They don't understand why, but they have signed that agreement. Again, five years is the requirement. We've been lax on it. A lot of times you'll have a cul-de-sac. It goes nowhere. You got four or five homes in there. You got a lot of gaps. Obviously, it's not a through street, so we're trying to be mindful there. Some of the gaps are in active developments, but they're a slow development, mostly due to the the price of the homes. You get much over five hundred thousand on a home. It just takes a little bit longer. Five hundred thousand is not much to buy a home anymore, but you get in that upper end market, the lots just go slower. So the gaps last longer in those in those some of those neighborhoods. And as you can see, the location of these, a lot of those are in those types of neighborhoods. It just takes a little longer to to take down those lots. So there are approximately forty lots on the map that are over ten years old. Again, no home construction that triggered it. Some of these gaps are in well-developed areas. A lot of those yellow dots you can see there. So sidewalks are there and there's a gap. The advantage is most most situations, the other side of the street is fully connected. So that's another reason not to push it. We've got sidewalk completely on one way. One sidewalk, one side side of the street, we've not necessarily pushed the second side of the street to have that done it done yet as well. Finally, the third type of gap is just our industrial gaps, commercial gaps. Previous councils did not require specifically, did not require sidewalks and the resolution shifted all responsibility to the city in a future date. I think a lot of that was just to encourage manufacturing and employment centers to come into town with that extra about that extra cost of sidewalk. So a lot of those gaps you see there are, some of them are developer responsibility, some of them will be city responsibility if there's a desire to connect our our commercial centers with additional sidewalks. Some of these sidewalks have been completed along the highway with Kesha's project along Highway one fifty-one. The map just hasn't been updated yet. So these will be done mostly with the sidewalk assessment project that the council wants to proceed. Finally, you know, kind of next steps as we talk about the gaps, we've got a lot of different maps there. Some were generated by our engineering department, some were generated by planning department. So we've got to combine our maps into one, get them updated since it's been a few years. We need to overlay our safe house of school maps with those as well, so we can really identify what sidewalks the school sees as priority and then what sidewalks the city sees as priority. Again, connecting our parks, grocery stores, medical facilities, whatever we may have to connect. So but we'd like to put our, we're going to put our effort into the safer out to school as our priority gaps, since those are two studies that have identified those. As we look at future city projects, if we're going to reconstruct a road, obviously, at that time, we can look at sidewalks as well or trails, depending on the classification. Going to continue to pursue the sidewalk gaps within the newer subdivisions. Again, that's usually just been a resident request or and there's been a lot of them just due to the busing, busing, busing situation at Lenmar, that will also where we see those cattle paths kind of cutting into the grass, we'll feel more aggressive with those. If the council wants to proceed with that or have a list of sidewalks they'd like us to prioritize, we'll take it and 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 run with that. And then if council desires in the future, we can resurrect the assessment program. That'd be a budget or CIP projects. We have to work with engineering and finance to determine how that would be slotted into a future budget for that program as well. Unfortunately, a hundred thousand does not go nearly as far as it used to. But we can start taking down a lot of the critical need sidewalks through that program as well. Questions?
Have questions for Dave? Randy?
Yes, I do. Dave, I've got several here, actually. I've taken a lot of phone calls off of the Lenmar School District up there in their northern territory off of Winslow. Can you just briefly explain how legislation or how state has changed the rules on the two-mile radius of the schools and their buses? Can you comment any of that or are you comfortable with that?
A little bit, yeah. The state had their own, as I understand, state had their own requirement for busing. Lenmar had its own requirement within that, and they were a very generous busing school district due to bus driver shortages and costs. I don't know if they've fully met, I don't know if they're backing all the way up to the state standard, but they have backed up their own self-imposed standard. And that's created the situation up on Winslow Road especially. And those are some of the gaps we did fill. But I'm not saying they're at two miles like the state requires. They may be less, but they're more than they were and it affected a lot of folks.
Right, exactly. You said you had worked with some of the the school districts. Can you comment as to what Lenmar's specific situation is? Here's the deal. I've got people out there on that territory. They're just, they're one point nine eight miles from the school. They won't permit the kids to walk one block further away to catch a school stop. And yet they have no path to get to school. Has that been addressed? And you know, just catching a lot of loopholes there. Parents are buying homes that have been built and then realized that kids know have have no ways to school and the school district's not working with the students on that. And we're just kind of curious, is there any feedback to that dialogue that's going on with the school students and families that are paying the taxes in that school district for that service?
Yeah, we've been meeting with the school, we meet with Lenmar. We meet with both school districts every month. We meet with Lenmar every month as well and talking to their transportation folks and maintenance folks. They've identified a few areas for sidewalk improvements or sidewalk gaps. Unfortunately, most of those are going to be a city project because they're they're basins that we took, the developer paid us, gave us money for the sidewalk because it wasn't ready to be installed. We have since spent that money on other projects. So it's a, it's again, it's overlaying engineering map, planning map and safer house of school maps and seeing where the overlaps really are. And then those becoming a project and then trying to try and find dollars next fiscal year to our next budget cycle to to do those projects.
Right, exactly. And just for the benefit of the viewers that are listening and watching as well, too, is you know, every time a new school is is put on the map, so to speak, that that changes the plotter as well, too, on the on the two-mile radius for the school for busing. My last question is, is are we following the same best practices as our peer cities do when it comes to this, as far as the build-out from the contractors and allowing there to be gaps from one sold lot to the next and and creating these? Or can you just kind of frame that up for me? Are we, are we right in line with all of that? Or is there different practices that we should consider?
Yeah, I can't speak for all of our comparables. And I can't even speak for Cedar Rapids, unfortunately. I'm a lot of data on there, but I know in within the Des Moines metro area, they require sidewalks to be installed on all collectors with the with the initial street construction. We now require that. So if, if, for example, somebody came in on Thirty-Fifth or Twenty-Ninth or Forty-Fourth, those collectors or minors or majors would all require a sidewalk to be installed at that time. Now, that doesn't help the internal streets, but we are getting sidewalks on those major streets to get those folks and kids into the into the established network. Some communities are five-year install requirements, some are ten. We went pretty aggressive with five. Because at the time, we were fairly aggressively growing community. I mean, it's growth has slowed across all our comparables a little bit. So we were, at five years would be enough time to get most twenty lot subdivisions done or finding that might be a little aggressive. So some communities are five, some are ten. With five, I think it's, I think it's comparable with most of our peers. What was this? Was there another part of that question I missed?
No, I think you.
I think we're, I think we're very much in line with a lot of our peers on on the sidewalk installations. The, again, there was some, quite a bit of leeway between community to community, only we looked at it five years. Actually, yes, we looked at this seven years ago. So I don't know what they've changed their.
When you, for my last, for my last question, and I appreciate this. When you say between the five years and ten years and we were a little aggressive beyond the five, can you tell me what what changes it or what makes it aggressive, other than the fact of the economy and the selling of the lot? Is it, is that purely what would classify us as being a little aggressive? Or, I mean, after five years, if they're not sold, yes, it is concrete. It is probably the least expensive component to building a home and you know, it it's it's part of the of the risk. We all assume risk in business and and the risk on that might be that they have to put a sidewalk in at the developer's expense. But is there anything in there that would change us from being a little too aggressive for that?
So, I mean, if I was to put a developer hat on, it'd be, I might be putting a sidewalk in twice at five or six years. And then I'm going to have to rip out a good section. If I want a three-stall garage, I'm going to get a thirty-two, thirty-six foot wide driveway. I'm going to lose thirty-six feet or thirty-two feet of drive or sidewalk. So it's, I mean, it's it's a very small portion of the project, but talking to them, their margins are really thin.
Yeah, and I understand because with every development, there's the prime lots that are going to go first, and there's going to be the leftovers. There's always going to be crumbs and irregular lots that people are just, they're less desirable. And unfortunately, those are connectors, though. So I was just kind of curious. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Steve?
I believe we ought to adopt the tree model or our sidewalk model. And that is the best time to plant a tree is today. And the best time to install a sidewalk is starting today. We've not done a lot, you know, in a handful of years. So we definitely have a lot of ground to make up. And you've got an awful lot. I mean, this is a giant plate to look at, to chew off. And I think how we set our priorities is the most critical as we go forward, because I know that one of the challenges when we were doing it years ago was just the amount of time consumption it took in the engineering department, you know, for what we were getting out of it. So what kind of money we're going to have to spend, how we go about it, whether we put in the assessment program, which personally I'd be in favor of, is important. But I do agree with at least one of the top priorities of going after the the safe school routes. To me, that's one of the top priorities I would have. Another one would be filling gaps, short gaps. For example, I'll give you, I'll throw one out that everybody's probably familiar with. On Seventh Avenue in front of Gilchrist Jewett, you've got a gap right there. You've got sidewalk on each side of it. And so you got just a little gap. So those types of gaps, to me, I think can be filled in and that would be another priority I would be looking at. But so I know there's a lot to bite off, a lot to chew, even looking at the whole aspect of one side versus both sides. As long as you've got a nice, long, safe contiguous route. If it's on one side and the other side doesn't have it, you know, again, I would be in support of that as well to at least get contiguous sidewalk routes, you know, throughout the city. Because a lot of that red isn't, is showing it on both sides of the street where it's not there. I'd be in favor, you know, if you focus on one side everywhere, that's, you know, at least some kind of a plan. So how we would handle this from a city standpoint and actually get it done, I think, is a huge challenge. So I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion on your point, but at least from my standpoint, I think you've done a heck of a lot of legwork. We appreciate that. And I think it gives us a lot to look at. So at least that's my two cents worth, I think, on where at least I think some of the top priorities ought to be.
Dave, can you back up to one of the maps? Okay, that's a good one to start with. I think that large structure essentially in the center of that is, that's Walmart, if I'm not mistaken. And so the red dots that are running along the side of one fifty-one to the west of Walmart, is is that suggesting that that's a gap?
When this map was created, created, it was. It's now got the trail in.
The side paths.
The side paths are in. Sorry, the side paths are in. This map was old enough. It's something we, Darren and I have talked about in engineering, about updating. That's part of the next steps is updating these maps. We really got to go out and walk and see what's done and what's not done.
Yeah, they don't want to update maps. They want to go dig holes.
They want to move dirt.
All right. So back up to the next, the other map. So I'm looking at, it's Lucor Road. And it's that orange segment that crosses the creek. Isn't that, that's slated for a pedestrian bridge? And does that include then approach sidewalks to that bridge?
It does include the sidewalk. I don't know the specifics of the design, though. One side.
Yeah, right. And I know that's being engineered. So, okay, so that one in the relative near term is going to disappear.
Correct. Several of these dots are disappearing already this year. This map got created about three months ago and it's been, it's been a pretty nice little been about forty homes built this summer and a lot of them are on these dots. So.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Hello. You know, I've got to ask on this, to clarify for some of my colleagues. Part of the, I think, the issue with the Winslow area, too, is the Safe Routes to School Plan for Lenmar. Unlike the Marion Plan, the Marion Plan is for the entire district. It was unique. Usually, when you do a Safe Roads to School Plan, you only do it for a building. But because the Marion Independent District geography is so small, we were able to incorporate the entire district. But usually, you would just do a school. So with Lenmar, when this started before the pandemic, the conversation with them was where should we concentrate? And because we had learned some lessons with Marion Independent on the building of Longfellow. And before that opened, we said, listen, we've got a problem. We know we're going to have a problem around the Echo Hill Oak Ridge area when the new school goes in because it's a dead-end road. And then we're also building Boulder Peak, so let's get ahead of that, too, as these neighborhoods are coming online. So it's, the the plan only focuses right now on those four buildings, and I'd say two campuses, if you look at it that way. Which that comes into play when you're talking about the Winslow Road area that was so impacted by the changes Lenmar made to the busing because of different area. Also, that side of Tenth Street that we hear about with the annexed area and people wanting to get to Laug Park. And why that doesn't get on there. So in Dave's defense, it's a little tricky because that came in kind of, you know, extra piece to the plan and the conversation. So we appreciate all of that because, yes, we are hearing a lot about how these kids in those affected neighborhoods. Because we also have them what to do on Twenty-Ninth. I think we've seen it because it's come to us routinely with people wanting rapid flashing beacons on Twenty-Ninth. They've wanted them crossing so that they're shuttling from Wilkins. And what can we do on there? So we're really being impacted. And it's not just sidewalks. That's a whole other piece, anyway. But on the sidewalk piece of it. So my question also, Dave, is how there's a lot coming at the city. And I think the developers, am I correct, I'm pulling this out of the back of my memory from previous time with council that the reason we don't require sidewalks when a developer puts, some states require that a sidewalk goes in when you put in a development. So you could have just basically an entire subdivision laid out with sidewalks on it, not a house to be seen. The developers don't always like that because then their equipment is driving over those sidewalks as they build these homes. Am I correct there? Okay.
And if I may, sometimes there's some elevation to homes. I mean, you get the sidewalks to be certain heights above the curb, but then sometimes that home is up and down. You're not sure how they're going to
grade.
What's going to grade and look like, too.
So that is an impact on why we don't haven't looked at required. Does anybody in the state of Iowa require developers to put in sidewalks when they put in the development in the streets?
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Just out of curiosity in the discussion, they're all, they're all thinking. And then how how do we, because I feel like we're just never catching up. How how do we? Because I feel like we're just never catching up because. We have gaps in, say, the Marion Independent area that we identified as part of Safe Routes to School. Plus, I think you just identified because everybody knows if you walk them that. There's sidewalks that go nowhere, and there's sidewalks that end even in the old areas that are tricky. So. But you can't just put in what we had there, because the sidewalks that are there are this big, and if you put in a new one, they're going to be. Wider, right? So then you end up redoing more, or does that not happen?
Uh, it I I don't, I can't, I I guess I'm not sure the width on all the sidewalks in the oldest part of town, but yeah, I mean, you'd have to. Merrick match into them, or um you have to reconstruct more to to meet their requirements. And then um. There's a uh. So five foot, I'm gonna call it the pass. There's a five foot panel that's required, so many feet to allow for uh passing. Uh, with those some ADA. Requirements, I don't know the length off the top of my head.
Hundred feet.
Two hundred, every two hundred feet need a five foot panel. Uh, it's pretty easy to accommodate in the new neighborhoods because you put that panel into the driveway. It's a lot more difficult here. If you're not reconstructing driveways, all of a sudden you have that panel that just kinda.
Right, I think we saw that we walked. It's not as easy as just taking from this sidewalk to that sidewalk and putting in five feet of a. Sidewalk to connect to things. There's different pieces that can be impacting. So. How, you know, how do you, how do we, I mean, twenty five, twenty five plus years? Is incredible long time. Love, I mean, how do you get caught up on the old while still meeting? The new and are there, there's just. Heard from the MPO. Trails, um, but these don't qualify as a trail because they're not wide enough. In some cases, some are, some aren't. Is that accurate, too?
Yes.
So, um.
I'll add the the gaps, while they'd be a lot of work, these these gaps are easy. Uh, they're required to install them. It's just a matter of me asking to install them. If they refuse, then it's a matter of the council directing them to install them. Um, so I I mean, it's a it's a lot of work, but it's an easy process because it's all laid out in the memorandum of agreement. Now what happens and it's within the code. The assessment project for the older parts of town, that's a.
Different.
It it's especially like the sidewalk ramps, you'll be doing it for. Years and years and years. Um, that's a never ending project for engineering right now, and. It's it's the exact same situation there in these older parts of town. You just gotta identify, use the safer house of school, uh, use the parking study. Uh, and use any other studies we may have to try to take that massive list and. Take your top ten and just keep going down the list as you go. And again, priorities may shift if a new elementary opens up or a. Something else happens. I mean, obviously, things will go up and down on that list in terms of priority, too. Uh, but it's it's gonna be, this will be a big project that'll last twenty years if I get it all done.
Okay, because I think.
Both sides.
Well, because we had talked and it started again before COVID, kicked it back up, and I put on my. Well, being hat here, but we had talked about not only with the schools, but helping to prioritize if we looked at safe routes to parks and public places as well. And looking at these same overlays, you know, we have great parks, but can we get to them? Can it, can our families ride their bikes? Can people walk to them with? Um, are the handicap accessible sidewalks leading to be able to enjoy these great spaces that we are creating? So um. The general scheme of things, I I think five years is more than generous in putting in these sidewalks. I I think we should be putting that. Tightening that up a lot. I think the walkable community um. For families is one of the most important things we're going to do, and we've talked about it before, and whatever we need to do to make that. Aggressively happen.
Thanks. Will?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't a couple of years ago, council direct you to? Go after everything that was like twenty five years plus? And make them put in sidewalks, and that all got completed, correct?
Um, a lot of those got completed. Hunter's Ridge did not. Um, we had just, we had just uh had done Lucor Road sidewalks, and it affected three or four associations and. I mean, it was to around sixty or seventy thousand dollars in total cost to. Half dozen associations out there. So it was a big, it's a big financial ask.
But all the.
So I kind of pumped the brakes to allow that, allow them to recover a little bit. Uh, and then we went and identified a lot of the the twenty five year gaps um. That were closer to schools, parks. And so those those really those remaining yellow ones. Uh, outside of Hunter's Ridge and the orange ones. Um. There are city detention basins. That did not require sidewalks when they were done back in the day. That's now our responsibility. A lot of those dollars were received by the developer or received by the city from the developer. To defer the sidewalk installation, we've taken those funds and made improvements elsewhere in the community. So they come back again. That's our responsibility. And then a handful of yellow dots out there are sidewalks that have been. Uh, previously deferred by the council. They're still out there, still required to be installed, but there's a resolution that either deferred them. Or they did some partial corrections on some corner lots to. To get some sidewalks in. So uh, those yellow dots, they look like a lot, but a lot of those are, they're on us to to do. Not all of them, but a lot of them.
Okay, I have to agree with what Steve said, too, that. Be good to fill in not only the stuff for around the schools, but those just gaps that are like Gilchrist Jewett or on Thirty First Street that I've brought up a few times. Um, so.
What's what's next on this? What what's your next?
Really, next, whoops, go next steps again. Um. And next steps internally, I gotta layer all these maps to one master map and 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 bring in safe routes to school. So we can really see them on top of each other and then really start identifying uh the school's priorities kind of become the city's priorities. Uh, around the schools and then identify like the Gilchrist Jewett. Uh, obviously, that's one I've heard two or three times. It's not near a school, but it's it's risen to the top. So identify those areas. Uh, bring that forward and say, okay, if you want to do these sidewalks. Here's the process. Is it an MOA or is it an assessment program? Uh, then you're gonna have to decide as the council at the budget time. Are we gonna, are we gonna fund this?
So you'll come back to us with a plan?
Yeah, my goal is.
Or some options or something like.
Yeah, once I have a map. Okay. All married up together a little bit, I'm gonna bring all our priority sites back, uh, save our school and city priorities, see what that looks like. And then let you know how, if you want to accomplish this, this is what it's gonna take. Um, and then get the direction from there.
The ones that are memorandum of agreement. I mean.
I can do those tomorrow.
You don't need us.
I don't need.
Oh, do we need to have a resolution of necessity?
Only if they refuse to put them in.
Okay.
And then and then you'll pass a resolution to assess to say, no, you're required.
So you'll be, you'll be, you'll be going after those. And if you have, if you need a resolution from the council, you'll come back to the.
We go that, we go after those every single year, and most of, most of the ones I've gone after are owned by the developer or builder. They don't want to put them in, but I think they understand. They don't wanna, they don't want to come out here to council and say, I don't want to put sidewalks in. They want to work with me to get it done.
I think you can sense a consensus.
Yeah.
Um, you know, where the council would stand on on that if they did come to council. So, um, okay. Are we good? Do you have anything else to add to?
I've talked enough.
Well, this was a long, but very, very good discussion. So thank you very much. Appreciate all your work on it. Okay, uh, next is the agenda review. The only item that's marked is on the second page, which is under B one. Uh, is there anything? Before B one that anyone would like to discuss? All right. Mike has B one. Yeah, and I understand that it's being moved. To the regular agenda for Thursday. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanted to give a a quick update. So this is the contract for the actual carts. So we'll have a garbage recycling and yard waste cart. So they'll be the same. Unit, there's samples out there, there's two sizes, and then they all have different colored lids depending on what they're uh. Picking. Um, so postcards went out. Um, and I just wanted to give. Uh, city staff a huge kudos. So this is just, I'm not gonna read all these numbers to you, but you can see. City Hall on Monday, we had eighty four people that came into City Hall. Um, so it was buzzing here. Jenna did a great job. Um, out of public service, I can tell you that the phone was ringing constantly, and so we had people coming in to look at the carts that were out there. And then the phones just constantly. So you can see how many emails and phone calls, all the different touch points we've had. Um, Harper and I were out there. At the farmer's market um this past weekend, we maybe only had five people, maybe if that.
Let's try to say six.
Okay, six and got a little wet with all the rain. So just not a lot of uh. Feedback for that, but we'll continue to do that so that people can actually see the carts and make those selections. Um, so with that so far, right now, um. Of the the program that we have them either. Themselves going in and doing, or if they're filling out the postcard, we're actually manually then doing it for them, or I can tell you a lot of times someone might call and have a question, or like. Would you like to go ahead and make your selection? We'll just do it right now while you're on the phone. Get it done and and over with. Um, so you can see again, I'm not gonna read all the numbers to you, but you can see. These are the selections that have been made as of yesterday. So. If they were picking uh just uh garbage and recycling with the large tote. They actually don't have to submit anything. So these are only the ones that are submitting. There are some that have submitted that want the the larger one, but for the most part. Um, but you can see people getting extra sizes. There's some we need to call and clarify because they might have said they wanted an extra garbage cart, but didn't tell us what size they wanted for their extra one. So. There's some follow up that we have to do on some of that, but you can see that huge peak on the twenty fourth. It slowly kind of tapered down. Um, but there's been a lot of. Of uh touch points on this. So uh, we're gonna use the the state bid on this and and move this forward. And on Thursday, what I can do is I can provide a new graph to even show how it's changed from today to Thursday. So.
That it for you?
Yeah.
Questions for Mike? Start with Randy.
Thanks, Mike. Um. Can you tell me, do we have any kind of built in program that says there's gonna be a margin of people that just didn't send the cards back? We're gonna order up the large totes. Is there any way we can refund those, exchange those totes back out for the smaller ones? Uh, does that make sense?
So the residents themselves, so say they don't send in their postcard, they're on vacation or whatever, there's a ninety day window. So in September, when we actually go out and deliver the carts, they'll have ninety days to say, wait a minute. This cart's too big. I want the smaller one, or I ordered the smaller one because I thought that's all I needed. I need the bigger one. So they're gonna have that ninety day window to do that.
Okay, so that's post when we flip the switch and move over to the automation. Okay. And that's, I think that's very helpful. I appreciate that because, you know, in our dialogues with people, I didn't know that we had a ninety day grace. Post conversion on that. I was kind of assuming they were gonna be stuck with the large and. We were gonna have this surplus, you know, surplus uh large container sitting around um that we couldn't, you know. Refund or exchange or get back or or what have you. So thank you for that clarification.
And that's the nice thing with using the standard tote, and we're just changing the lids as. If some were to move and then they want a smaller and vice versa, we can just change those lids out as we need them. So.
Right, and that's.
Last parts that we're having to change.
That's exactly how I've been explaining it because it just makes, you know, makes perfect sense with the exception of the volume itself. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
Mike, I'm just looking at the data that you've got presented here. Uh, so there's been twenty two hundred online submissions, twenty five hundred. Uh, well, I suppose online plus cards equals the total carts that we now have in our order for twenty four eighty three. Is that correct? I'm trying.
Yeah, not all the math's gonna be exact. So the online submissions, it may not have been the individual that did it. It might have been over the phone, or it might have been.
Yeah.
We have all hands on deck right now, so if we get a card in the mail or a card that gets handed to us at City Hall. Or we're in an event, I've had people give them to me, and I've taken them wherever we're at. And so it might be staff putting that number in there, too. So the online submissions isn't necessarily the resident putting it in there. That just means it's in our database.
Okay, so I I guess that where I was going with this is at such point. Um. I guess, will we have an understanding of we've got essentially all orders or requests that we're gonna get? Plus those that we would just naturally distribute. I'm just trying to understand what, how we're measuring our completion relative to the. Twelve thousand, six hundred stops on weekly.
Yeah, so obviously, we had a a big peak right away, and you can kind of see it's kind of gone down. So. Um, when Amber gets back, we'll likely do another Facebook post or something. We'll continue to kind of push that. Um, but eventually that'll taper off.
Sure.
And so, and that's why we have that ninety day grace period of swapping out if they want to.
All right. Good. All right. So it's just really executing to uh continue to execute the communications plan.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Can I give you my selection now?
I'm just. After the meeting, yes.
I got a postcard. Anyone else? Go ahead. So the twelve thousand, six hundred, that's how many stops there are, and there's been one thousand, one hundred and seventy yard waste, people that opted in. So basically ten percent ish, a little under ten percent.
Yep, and originally we thought we're gonna be at the thirty percent, and again, we're not done yet. There's, I can tell you, there's a pile of them out there that have not been entered yet, so.
And then are the carts gonna be uptown at the Uptown Market this Saturday?
I don't know if they're at the uptown.
That we will be up here. I'm just not sure where we'll be located yet.
Okay. Thank you.
What about lobby? Um, yeah, a couple of questions, but first I just want to say thanks to staff and uh. Everyone to entertaining my uh desire to move this to the regular agenda. I just think anything that has to do with automated garbage collection. Being that it's a a topic, a very popular topic in our community that's impacting the majority of our residents. I just think all the transparency we can have is great for all these big decisions. Um, my first question, um, I had, I was at Taube the week before last, so it was nicer weather, but I didn't have the carts with me. And I had a lot of people asking about the carts and some folks brought tape measures. They were ready to measure the thing. Um, I was like, I don't have it. I'm sorry. Um, but it was in the notes, at least like what the dimensions were. But a couple of questions I had, and I just wanted to clarify for folks. Um, if if something happens to their cart damage wise or. And it's not necessarily their fault, what's like the policy there if they do need another cart, uh even after that ninety days?
Sure. So as long as it wasn't them that ran it over or destroyed the cart, it's the city's cart and we'll replace it.
Okay. And then just to clarify on there, because just really surprised to even see that many people want. Additional garbage cart means that the two garbage carts, that's what they're asking for. Okay, because I know a lot of people were like, those are really big. I don't think I'm gonna be able to fill them, or I don't know where I'm gonna put them. And so I'm seeing that many people want more than one. I'm kind of surprised. So thanks for clarifying that.
Kim, you have something in?
I was just gonna add, the the cart, the cart will come with a warranty on them. So there's a period of time that if there is something that's, you know, just. It's put together wrong, you know, there's some type of function to it, but then we are also covered through that warranty.
Okay, great. No, that's good to know. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think. I I just want to say, um, you know, great job to the to to everybody because um. I think the communication, the amount of care that has gone into uh making sure that the community is well informed. Um, has been really extraordinary and um. Uh, just a really good job on on. Executing this whole project, which is a massive project, but generally. The response in the community has been positive. I hear lots of people saying, I'm so glad this is coming. I can't wait. Um, certainly, you know, there are people with concerns, and we can't discount those, but the overwhelming. Response has been very positive. So. Thank you. Do you have anything else to add, Mike? All right, thanks. All right, uh, any questions on any remaining items on the agenda? Nothing is marked?
Yes, your honor.
Well, oh. Go ahead, Grant, and then we'll go with Steve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, this would go back to Mike on E two. Uh, concerning the resolution for the federal aid agreement for congressionally directed funding. Uh, related to the Albert, Albernet Road Extension Project. I. I even hate to admit this. Um, but I was looking at that agreement. And I noticed on the agreement, um. Item three, it just says the recipient is responsible for the development and completion. Of the following described project, and it says PCC, grade and pave in the city of Marion. Albernet Road from Seventh Avenue to Boyson Road. And I got to wondering, doesn't. Isn't there a little spur of Albernet Road that will go north of Boyson? And connect to the existing Albernet Road?
Yeah, so uh, at at some point in the future, we'll bring that back to city council for a separate discussion. So that's not part of what we asked for funding for. That's a completely separate project that we will do go from. Boyson Road to the existing Albernet Road, but that'll be future. Our big thing was the bridge and to connect the bridge.
Okay, I remember when that used to be a road long ago in a galaxy.
It's it's still right away.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Me, too.
Steve, yeah, I just want to want to make a comment on item A seven, uh, which is right above, uh, the one we talked about for automated collection. So it's not a big deal, but uh, it's talking about renewing, renewing the workers' compensation coverage. My comment is not about that in and of itself. It's the mod factor that is in that coverage, and Randy will attest to this. The city's mod factor is point five six. I'm telling you, that is excellent. So what that is, just so people who are listening to this, one is just saying that's the normal amount of accidents for the workers category that people would have across the entire country. So when you're at point five six, that's a reflection that our employees for the city are working very safely. The amount of accidents they have is much lower than normal. So I think that needs to be pointed out because to me, a point, a mod factor of point five six is excellent. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that is saving the city money.
Thanks, Steve. I think that brings us to the end of our agenda for today, unless there's something else anyone wants to discuss. Okay, thank you all for being here, and we will see you on Thursday.